This evening's meeting is being streamed live to the Carroll Media Center YouTube's channel and as well to our town's Facebook page. Once again, we've returned live. So I'll call the meeting this evening to order. It's Monday, January 27, 2025. It is precisely 7:00 PM. Let us please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll follow that with a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And that brief moment of silence, please. Okay, our first item of business as always is public comments. Are there any of those individuals in the gallery signed for?
We have nobody that has signed up here.
Okay, last call. No one wants to say anything to the mayor tonight. It's my last mayor and town council meeting as a forty-something. So that's my comment. So let's begin with the first item of real business, and that is our consent agenda. It is inclusive of the minutes from December 9th, December 16th, and December 19th, 2024 meetings, as well as the appointment of Amy Poet to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term, which would expire April 2028. It's their motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilman Grassley, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Dyer with the second. All in favor of approval of these consent agenda minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, that consent agenda is unanimously accepted and adopted. Our first item of new business is our annual presentation by the Downtown Sykesville Connection, followed with some recognition of some very special people. Fantastic. And I will call our Executive Director of the Downtown Sykesville Connection, Julie Dela Maria, to the microphone.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for having me.
My name is Julie Dela Maria. I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Sykesville Connection. I put for everyone a little folder. Thank you for already opening it. Leo, you did not get one because you already had yours. And Joe did also over the summer. So everyone else should have a folder with some material in it, including our impact sheet that you will see on the screen later tonight. I am very proud to present to you a comprehensive review of our 2024 activities, reflecting our commitment to best practices in governance and its effective use of the National Main Street four-point approach. This framework ensures all committees operate strategically with structural work plans that are essential and mandatory for accreditation and also vital for our mission. So the DSC adds a quick reminder on how we function for people that are not familiar with our organization. The Downtown connection, Sykesville Connection is a nonprofit that adheres to Maryland nonprofit standards of excellence, ensuring compliance, transparency, and accountability with the boards of directors, some of them being here, having oversight of governance and internal activities with several committees that are listed here, and trusting me and my team with the administration of the DSC external activities that are led through the work plan of our committees listed at the bottom. We have five committees: Design Committee, Promotion, Economic Development, Justice, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and Green Committee. To comply with state and national accreditation requirements, each committee operates with a detailed, result-oriented work plan aligned with the overarching mission of the organization that ensures consistent progress and impactful outcome across committees. So I'm going to start by highlighting, oops, the pillar under which we function for each committee. Each and every activity we put together is trying to accomplish at least two or three of those objectives. There's our guiding principle: Get Ward, Get Engaged, Get Together, Get Green. And we do that through our day-to-day operation with our people, through our processes, implementing our strategic vision. So I'm going to start with accomplishment of our Design Committee. The Design Committee is focused on historic preservation but also cohesive beautification through a variety of art projects. We were founded in 2024 by the Cal County Art Council and were able to accomplish two super cool projects. The first one led to the creation of a frame poster, a limited edition still available on our website, that required to hire a professional photographer, identify historic door, create connection with the property owners, and finally deliver that poster. There's one at the townhouse. I don't know where Joe hung it, but if you want to check it out, there's one in this building. We also implemented a class, class project. They were complementary art class at Axe for Evan, six weeks of them, two hours per week, with professional and trained supervisor and artist for each of those projects that included middle schooler trying to create a superhero shaped after themselves, a DEI-inspired program for the high schooler under the supervision of an LP art specialist. And finally, we add for adults, a project that was oriented toward historic preservation and featuring the historical feature of Sykesville. And you can see that that turned out pretty beautifully. Another project of that committee over the summer was Historic Preservation Series. A project was delivered across several meetups, and those meetups took place different places in Sykesville, led by local experts. And they covered the topic of the benefit of historical preservation, the requirement of the Historic District Commission, and why it is so important to adhere to them, and the impact of historic preservation on sustainability, economic development, and tourism. If you want to visit the Design Committee webpage, you can see some videos that were assembled with the material used in those presentations. Another project that we fell in love with and are pretty proud of is the Global Root Music mural music that was hung on our Main Street June 7th, with many of you attending. I'm going to play the video.
The sense of pride and connection is the essence of this project and turned out into something absolutely marvelous.
At the community garden in downtown historic Sykesville, there's a new tree, and it doesn't have to be planted to have roots. It's the latest installation in the Global Mural Mosaic Project.
We came up with this project during COVID. We used Facebook to try to connect all the people across the country to paint a tile to make the big picture.
Nearly 2,200 tiles make up this piece, painted by about eighty Sykesville residents like Mary Castle.
This is one of the committees that I'm on, Jedi. So I figured I would represent us and do something that shared a little bit about what Sykesville's about.
It's just a fantastic assembly of stories painted by people all over the world, put into a piece named Friends and Family. And I'm so proud we have it here downtown in Sykesville.
The top right corner tile is from an artist in Germany.
Governor Moore painted. One tile with his family and one tile with his staff.
It's something everyone can enjoy. It's free. It's freely accessible. And it brought us all together, not just by community, but this reflects society.
Canadian project designer Louis Lebois says so far, there are murals like this in about ten states and nine countries, all in towns like Sykesville that have huge hometown spirit. The roots of the tree showing how everyone is connected.
If you go online, you can actually click on every one of these tiles, and you can see the name of the person who painted it. Right now, it's just a little grassroots thing. We're having fun doing it. We just want people to have fun painting.
Ian Sykesville, Jen Franciani, WBAL TV 11 News.
So I, pretty cool, no? Very cool. I chose that specific project among all of the other ones we did to show you tonight and to detail a little more, because that's a perfect example of what the DSC does. We have a committee that did something centered around the art. We included peoples. We have a Jedi Committee, the representation of the volunteer, but also togetherness, because that's what matters. And we accomplished so many of the missions of our other work plan, because by doing that, we drew people to Main Street. Someone from Texas was here during the unveiling. And we also accomplished, beside promotion, it would be better with my glasses, beside the effect on promotion, it was the ignition of a collaboration of other DSC activities that happen across committee, which is our Facade Improvement Program. I don't know if you noticed, but the mural was hung on the picture you can see on the right, which is a dilapidated wall. And that's how we started that. We connected with the owner by asking for that wall space. And at the inauguration, worked with them, got to create a connection, realized that the windows on both sides were covered with plastic because they're the original metal windows. And those guys never found a way to get them changed. They didn't understand how to do it right, what was the process, what was the guideline, how to go through the steps to get it done, how to find the funding to. So the funding was partly supported by the Facade Improvement Program that we run jointly with the town of Sykesville. So through that connection we established, we were able to change those windows, the original window from the supplier, from the contractor, got it all done in a matter of weeks. And then when the owner finally put the window back in and removed the plastic and looked at the wall with the new windows, they're like, oh, now we have to fix the wall. And they did fix the wall. And that's a perfect example of an art and togetherness project that snowballed into economic development. So continuing with Economic Development Program, you can see one of the other projects that was founded this year is the front of Sam Sara that had some wood damage. That Economic Development Committee that I was just mentioning is there to strengthen economic vitality in downtown through innovative initiatives and holistic approaches. So what we did this year, we brought back all the LED decorations that make people smile and giggle, and we added some more with that beautiful photo op with that could be used both ways, for a view of Main Street or a view of the townhouse. And we also put disco balls in an alley, because what's better than disco ball? Absolutely nothing. And it has the effect we expected. People really enjoy walking through it. It also made a TV segment. We also published our updated version of the visitor guide, which you have one in your little folder. So it is finally completed. It has all the business, including the newest one. We did the map. We made sure everyone is on it. And the guide, I think, is really exciting, because all of these businesses that are featured in it talk about their emotional connection with Sykesville, not only their business, but why they pick Sykesville as their home for their business. We use these visitor guides for bags that we created for residents. We work with the HUAs at Raincliff and at Parkside to provide little bags that are the same materials that you have in your folder, a card featuring free activities for families. But it also had a coupon book for about thirty businesses downtown that we created for the 2024 year. We also spurs up our window decal for the gift card programs that will run for the Main Street merchants. That gift card also available on our website is redeemable in thirty-three downtown businesses. The property at Seventy-Sixth Main Street, my pride and joy, and the hill I will die on. So we have made progress. And as you can see, I showed you some major improvements that were accomplished throughout the project. We now have a real store fund for the middle section of the building, which is going to be a huge advantage for the tenants there. You can see that the exterior repair is almost entirely done, for the exception of the commercial door at the bottom, which we'll replace next week, and complete the exterior renovations. For the inside, how can you tell we have made progress? The toilet is gone. And you can see that middle picture here is the latest. It looks really good. And it's the latest progress in there. We are about to go to drywall and finish. So we are having HVAC and electric hall at the end of this week, and then we can move forward. Another proof that we are making progress is the smile of our future tenant on that bottom-left picture. Her name is Beck Stavely. She will be operating a do-it-yourself art studio with some classes, workshop, and some retail, made with the artists that she will have there. Promotion Committee is again something that we're very much focused on. It's how we draw people downtown Sykesville, ensuring all of the things that we can do that no one else is doing. And we do that through social media campaign, printed advertisement, press, and celebrity visits. You can see here, the second picture from the bottom that I'm hovering above, we had an Olympian visiting us in snowshoeing. Is this what he does? And he's going to Italy, and he's probably going to be part of our parade. His name is Brandon, and we did a tour of Sykesville with him. We also do billboard and an array of printed advertisement. All of that got us a cover in the Cal County Times almost every month, and one every week in the month of October, and six TV segments, which I apologize for. I know you keep telling me that's too much. Six TV segments driving people to Sykesville. Also, we try to do cross-promotion with lots of our partners. And one of them that I mentioned here, because I wanted you to write down the code, is Turf Valley. We have been driving sales for their hotel about eight thousand in 2024. So they give us a discount to our Sykesville people, and I'm allowed to share it now with more people. So please write it down and go for a staycation at a discounted rate at Turf Valley, but only if you shop and eat on Main Street. We cannot talk about the Promotion Committee without talking about our events. That includes the parade. You can see here the murmurs. We had rare form on the top right corner with a marching band during Fall Festival. You can see at the bottom is Craft Beer Festival or the picture of the parade and sipping on summer. Another gem of Sykesville is its Farmer's Market, Farmer's Market for which we have two super cool volunteers tonight that we will recognize for showing up almost every market to help in some fashion. So I'm very appreciative of their support. We had to get trick-or-treat on Main Street, Art and Wine Festival. And I think that's pretty it for those pictures. The Jedi Committee strives to create a space of intercultural and social understanding, acceptance, and connections that welcomes and celebrates all community members. This year, we had a fantastic Diwali. That was an opportunity again to strengthen partnership. It was held at Saint Paul Church, and it was absolutely beautiful. We played Indian music on our Main Street speakers. We dressed up the trees with some light and disco ball, and it was a success that we hope to grow next year, and that we already have found volunteer for. We did our window painting to beautify Main Street, but also amplify message of love and community support. We brought an American sign interpreter to our largest event to include everyone, and we're very happy to see a new audience showing up for Craft Beer Festival and enjoying that feature. We continue with our quarterly newsletter, and we raised over fifteen thousand dollars in December for our Happy Town, and spent a lot of it on groceries this year. So that was a much-needed feature for our guests. And I'm focusing here on the one event that was not the largest of our organization, but one that means a lot, because of the way it functioned. It was a couture kaleidoscope, which is a fashion show, but it was another demonstration of the impact of Main Street programs that are led by diversity and inclusion. So the uniqueness of that event was not only about being a fashion show and showing beautiful dresses. It was, as you can see here, hosted at Axe, but also engaged sponsors that we never got a way to tie in before. It's featured Main Street businesses that are sometimes harder to advertise. You can see Sam Sara at the bottom here, our sponsor of pinup acupuncture, pinup acupuncture over that, and the diversity in the clothing, diversity in age, culture, ethnicity. But the beauty about something like that is each and every person that participated to this fashion show is now a DSC person. Each and every person you can see lined up here is now either a committee volunteer, a garden volunteer, a sponsor. They all have shopped on Main Street. They followed up. This is how you create community. And that was another beautiful experience. We had Pride on Main Street and Juneteenth. Pride very well attended. Juneteenth was the opportunity for new partnership and connection, and we will grow those events this year. And I'm extremely excited for what we already have accomplished in terms of planning and logistic to make it happen. The Green Committee focuses on green initiative in Sykesville, the maintenance of the garden, and some educational programs. I'm very proud of the volunteers we had this year. I see they did a fantastic job. Joe, I see you nodding. I think they really focus on making the gardens that show the front lawn of the town of Sykesville beautiful each month of the summer. So I'm very proud of that. We had a tea, making tea session, and a few other things. But the crown jewel of this year was our composting program, which was state-funded, but it was also the topic of a silver award for three young, as they all do. So Charlotte, Sarah, and Payne, our cadets, Girl Scouts of True 1290, but also attend Sykesville Middle School, and they did a fantastic job, an array of in-person sessions. They did blogs, social media. They created the video I'm about to show you. And they gave away about fifty tabletop bins, and twenty larger composters were delivered directly to participants, who also were invited to meet their composting champion throughout the town. These people walk by neighborhood, welcoming their neighbors to empty their tabletop bin into their larger composter. So I'm going to show you that less than a minute video. So they did a fantastic job, and later tonight, I hope we can celebrate them for a second. I just have a few more slides to go through. So the impact sheets, that's a summary of what I just told you, a year-end review of the DSC. You have it in your folder, along with our new calendar. I want to mention the source of funding that have sustained all of these activities, and a huge thank you to the town of Sykesville, that has not only helped us with real estate acquisition, but is also there for a letter of recommendation when needed, or some support with staff time and resources. So we're very much appreciative of that. We are an accredited state and national Main Street program, and I'm repeating that because this accreditation is harder and harder to get. You will be judged on the soundness of your work plan, on the variety that you offer, and how your board is built, and how many committees are fully operational with a minimum of a certain amount of volunteer. We have trained at the National Main Street Conference in a variety of Main Street training, and Economic Development Workshop. And I also gave training for nonprofit excellence with the Maryland Main Street Program back in March. This is our 2015 calendar of events.
2025.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. I'm almost done, I swear.
You're so ten years ago, right?
And I wanted to say a huge thank you to the Board of Director and my staff that you can see on this table. Leo is missing. He just scoot out before we took that picture, but it would not be possible with them. Those guys go with me to the National Main Street Conference. They take training with the Maryland Main Street Program, with different contractors that we bring in to learn more. And so that's really awesome, to have such a committed team of dedicated and passionate people. In the blue is Brianna Batson, my event coordinator, who is going to have a little boy in June, so we're going to have our first DSC baby. I don't know if he will come out folding tents or not, but he will train him super fast. And Amber, to the very right over there is my assistant, who also is instrumental in getting things done. And here's, to conclude, my favorite view of Main Street, which one day will be my view leaving my office, I swear. So with this, thank you so much. If you have any questions, I will take them, and otherwise, we can recognize the fantastic young people who helped this past year.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Nope. What's the timeframe for completing construction, hopefully?
So I should have an update at the end of this week, but I'm hoping that by the end of the month of February, we can bring everyone to visit the building. I'm not making promises.
We'll look forward to it, no matter what happens.
Thank you. So I have, we can start with maybe our Farmer's Market volunteer, and if maybe your link would like to present them with me, their certificate and check, maybe we could grab a quick picture. Is that okay?
Holy, you crazy. Jose, come on up. Thank you so much. Shivani. Can you read your last name out loud for everyone?
Tuna Gubla.
Tuna Gubla. Very good, Shivani. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Teamwork makes the dream work. The next.
Julie, can you describe what they've done as volunteers for the Farmer's Market, what their participation was?
So they showed up every morning at 8:00 AM to set up the sponsor tents, the DSC tents. They arranged everything. They started the kids game with the little ducks in the fountain. They went to water the water garden. They went to water the garden by the townhouse. What else did you guys do?
Did you set up the tents for some people?
Yes, you did also a vendor door. That's very, yeah. What else?
We had to set up signs for the cars, so that the cars wouldn't come through the areas where the vendors were placing the cars.
They did all safety.
We did dog water, so we had dog water throughout the area so that when dogs come.
All the dogs on their leashes. On their leashes. Well, the dependability part is the best part. No matter what it is you guys did, it sounds like you were dependable, and knowing you were around for whatever might be necessary. So, like I said, keep up the good work.
And come back.
Yes.
Come back, please. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Leo. Very good question.
I will let the mom speak on the award part of it, because...
So the Girl Scouts Award is the second highest award a Girl Scout can earn. They identify an issue in their community. They research it. They implement it. Together, they did, what, a hundred and fifty hours of work on the composting project? They did it. I think the only thing is Dad helped with some website to start it, but they designed the website. They designed the pamphlets. They did the content for all of their educational seminars, and they researched the composters. What else did you guys do?
You did some education at school, did you not? Didn't you work with your...
I think that might be the next one.
That's what's up.
Yes, that's a potential for the next step.
Got it. Well, all of their hard work showed. I attended every one of the compost- I attended every one of the composting events. And there was a new group every time. And lots of people learned a lot of really great stuff that I know they are themselves implementing in their neighborhoods. And it was something that the DSC and myself have been wanting to make happen in some fashion or another for years. And you guys made that happen. What were you gonna say, Julie?
I think the two accomplishments that are to be noted, especially when you're twelve years old, they put the analytic together, which is was like sometime you just do your project and you move on. But the research, how they have reached the community and learned from those information, which is great. But they also were contacted to do a large representation with...
The Carroll County Environmental Advisory Council.
That's a big deal.
Big work. And they presented alongside the Department of Natural Resources for the entire state. They did a presentation for whatever they were talking about when they were there. It was all the different environmental groups. There were consultants there, which they were right there with them and did a fantastic presentation.
And you guys weren't at all nervous because you did it in front of the mayor like six times, so it's fine, right?
And that was awesome because that contact was made through what they did with the composting program.
If I could get the mayor and Ms. Julie to help, I'd love to do that. They earned their pins.
This is a really big deal. Do I stand up? Where does it go?
You'll see a bronze, they all have a bronze. It goes right underneath their bronze award.
You might want to mention your mom since you were their sponsor.
Sounds like it's bothering you, little mayor. Not sensitive at all. There's no feeling in that nerve, yeah.
Yeah, they're not meant to come off and on, right? Is it unlocked at the top or the bottom?
Can you plier something?
Yeah, I see.
At least it won't fall off.
All right. Where's the bronze over here? Should I go under or to the right of it?
Under.
Under?
Julie needs her glasses. Oh, you have one.
Needs a different prescription. Well, normally I'd offer to help, but I am even worse. So just gotta stand here.
Thank you so much.
It's a fantastic job, okay? Excellent.
Impressive.
Did I break it?
No. But when I got their bronze award, I put it on their vest before I get in their vest.
Sneaky. There we go.
And here is the little bag we'll go, guys. A little of our things for you to take home.
Can we call for a speech? Future governor's here, so...
Right?
The presentation. Thank you, everyone, right, Julie?
Thank you.
And it's beautiful. Your presentation is what we do, community.
We appreciate it. We appreciate the presentation and we appreciate the efforts and all of what you guys do. So thank you. And all the hours of volunteerism. Oh, my goodness gracious. So that brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is to consider, discuss, act on the Resolution Number 2025-01, allowing alcohol at downtown sexual connection events. If there's anyone in here that was only here for that fun part that we just did, please feel free, you don't need to stick around. I'd love it if you did. But now's the time to run if you're gonna run. Yeah, do it up.
Thank you all, have a good day.
Congratulations, you guys.
Or you get to see how government works and allows alcohol at events.
Right.
There's always that.
We're gonna run out like it's on fire.
That's a very good learning opportunity that's being passed out. See you guys, thanks again. All right. See you. Thank you.
So cool.
Okay, so we are at our second item of new business, as I mentioned. And that is Resolution Number 2025-01. We'll turn it over to Joe to present this item to the council, please.
This is again just our standard resolution to allow for alcohol during Arden Line, Sippin' on Summer, the Craft Beer Festival and selected Sundays at the farmer's market.
Copy. Thank you. And I've read the resolution, I assume my council has as well. Are there any questions for staff?
There's no new dates on this compared to last year, correct?
They're basically the same.
Yes, new dates, but same events.
Correct. I guess that's what I meant.
I know, that's what you meant, teasing. Any other questions?
So just for clarification, this has us closing down the street again. And I know last, this past year was the first time that the DSC has added walk-in tickets for people not consuming alcohol. So just wanted to kind of have that conversation again just so that we're clear on, you know, it's a request, it's not an expectation. If someone chooses to come to Main Street during that event, even though we've closed the street, they can still get to the vendors if they choose, and they can choose not to do that. Or if they do, I believe it was fifty percent of it went to downtown sexual connection for the event. And then the other went as a...
There were the Main Street boxes.
Main Street dollars. And so, yeah, just making sure that people understand that, I think is really important if we're closing the streets and having these different ways for people to get in.
Sure. Well, I guess we're all clear on that? Any questions? Okay. Thank you. If there's no other questions for staff, is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-01.
Thank you. Councilman Keane, is there a motion? I'll suck it. Thank you. Council President Carter. I don't imagine there's any need for debate, but if there is, please say so. All right, hearing none. With the motion on the table as seconded, before calling for that vote, I will repeat the motion. It is to approve Resolution Number 2025-01, allowing alcohol at downtown sexual connection events. All right, all in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. All right, that is a unanimous approval of Resolution Number 2025-01. That brings us to our announcements and reports. I will begin with those announcements. The next meeting is Monday, February tenth, 2024. And I'd like to also announce that we have volunteer opportunities as a crossing guard and on the police auxiliary unit. You don't hear me say anything else other than the crossing guard and the auxiliary unit, because for the first time in my memory, and I'm pretty sure everyone else's memory here at this table, and perhaps the first time in the history of the world, all of our commissions are completely staffed. We are, we are full. And I just wanna say, okay, yeah, I wanna do that. And like I said, it's really important that we acknowledge this because we're all grateful for engaged residents and for their dedication to keeping the municipal gears of government turning smoothly. So that applause was for them as well. We'll turn over the staff updates to Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, I know we'll be talking about this a little bit in close session too. And Chief will introduce a new employee as well. But all of our employee positions, all of our paid positions are also full. Speaking of our paid employees, I just wanted to publicly thank Public Works. This past weekend was actually their first weekend of the new year where they did not have to plow snow. So again, it's like they've been extremely busy this year. They deserve a lot of credit for not only keeping up with the snow removal, but also all the solid waste collections around town. So again, they've been, they've been working hard.
Nonstop.
The start of the year.
Thank you for that.
A couple of things regarding the Streetscape project. So again, one of the reasons why this is not an agenda item tonight is because we were actually able to get that project in a price range that we're actually pretty comfortable with. We didn't have to make any significant sacrifices. I think the biggest thing that looks like it's gonna end up getting removed from that project is my retractable bollards. We're still gonna be able to put bollards in. They're just not gonna be the retractable ones that get to go into the ground. So we'll still figure that one out. Right now...
What will they be?
Again, just like physically.
You have to install them.
We have to install them every time we...
Got it, just a panel that took us.
How hard, I mean, how heavy are they?
Oh, that's a good question, I don't know. Enough when they're installed to stop a car.
Gotta have guns.
Having backed into one in England, they...
The good thing is, is that they'll be approved from the extent of being safe and stopping a vehicle.
But we wouldn't need special equipment to carry them or...
Yeah, this is, this is manual install.
And you could always go back and retrofit later if you ever, if we wanted to do it, if it became a priority.
Certainly. I think the biggest item that our engineers and contractor are working on now is actual phasing of the construction. In all likelihood, it does look like the work along Main Street is gonna be delayed for several reasons. One of which, we don't wanna tear up Main Street in the middle of the busiest season for downtown. So again, in all likelihood, it's gonna be the station parking lot, we'll drive in Oklahoma and then we'll press pause and then come back and hit the rest of the improvements probably this time next year. Plus, that will actually tie into maybe some work that we're gonna do on the front lawn area and some other areas along Main Street. So again, this actually might be a blessing, blessing in disguise. Really, the only other thing is just to give everybody a heads up on the next meeting, we'll be introducing budget revision number one. Most of the changes or most of the updates to the budget are things that have been approved previously, such as the gatehouse front porch. We're actually gonna recognize the contribution we're making to the station project. So again, these are all things that have been approved previously. The one thing that I wanna mention is some, let's call it building maintenance issues or things that we wanna do mainly to the townhouse building and then also the waystation down at South Branch Park. I don't know if anybody's actually walked up to that building very closely, but it is in dire need of repainting, plus some repair work down there. So again, there's a couple of things that we wanna do around the townhouse, mainly with windows and some exterior painting as well. So again, those will be items that we'll show on the budget revision itself. But other than that, just some regular odds and ends for the budget revision.
So one question in reference to the Streetscape project. With the delay in the work, is a price escalation built in to the budget in reference to the escalation that possible between now and then because of just time and money?
There's nothing built into like what was quoted. We do anticipate obviously having to get some rebids. However, with waiting...
Mobilization and demobilization, is that all built in too?
That, that is, because there's a mobilization cost that we kinda know what it's gonna be. But withholding off on particularly on some of the Main Street, there's actually other funding avenues that might open up in addition to the ARPA funding that we have. So again, there's strategic demolition money. There's also highway user revenues that we could utilize for that project.
Thanks, Joe.
Speaking of the ARPA funds, Joe, did we, did we get in the report to get everything all set up?
The report's not due until March thirty first, or right after March thirty first. But the contract was signed in advance of the end of the calendar year. So we are certainly within compliance in that part. And then we have two years to spend. So until the end of 2026 to actually make all the expenses.
Who does that report go to? I know we talked a little bit about this.
It goes to the Department of Treasury. So it's a federal report that we have to submit. Now, admittedly, because we're relatively, again, I'm not saying three million dollars is not a lot of money, it is. But compared to what other jurisdictions received, we're relatively small potatoes. So again, our reporting requirements are approved light.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And those funds aren't grant funds, are they?
They are technically grant funds.
They are grant funds.
Yeah, so we will be going through the...
But we already have the cash.
Yes.
Okay.
But it's not until we spend it do we have to go through like the single audit requirement. So again, there's, when you spend, I think it's over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal money, there's slightly higher audit requirements for that particular spend. And again, our auditors are aware of that and they know it's coming.
And more of my question was around whether or not we have. But it's in our accounts, I've seen it in our accounts many times. So it's not, that's not an issue. Okay, thank you.
I do like to remind everybody that the interest that is accumulating on that account is not considered ARPA funds. So again, that's, that's just money.
And we have two years to spend. So that means that we have two years to invest and save and collect that interest.
Yeah.
And the new, and the new opening, the new opportunity for funding too that will exist that we haven't received yet.
That's all I had, Mayor.
I'm glad I thought of all of that.
That was, yeah.
Yeah, glad those are some really good ideas I had.
That was part of your project roadmap, wasn't it?
It really, really was.
Yeah, that's good.
It was like, let us wait till the ten minute mark before the whistle blows and then we will delay beginning it so that we can earn more money on what we have. I mean, it's perfect. Okay, thank you, staff update. That brings us to our treasures report. And I wanna welcome Jim...
Jim.
Jen Livsay. Boy, I blew that gem. Blowed that hard. Let me start over. Welcome Jen Livsay to your first mayor and town council meeting treasures report.
Yes. Yeah, so I'm one of the new faces for the full... So we're all here. So I actually had a couple of questions. So this here is all the revenues that we have at the moment. And like the biggest questions that we have is, like he said, the gatehouse. We invested in the new porch of the gatehouse, which is on, sorry, it's getting old. I can see far and close down the deal. So this is, sorry. On page... Okay, on page eight of this, the income statement, there's the, there's a couple of things I had questions about. The first one was the historic building. So this month, we decided to separate, one, to stay in budget, also to give the highlight of the Sykesville Station utilities. We didn't budget for that. So, but we wind up putting that utility into the schoolhouse. And we decided to separate that. Also, mostly because, one, it gives us, since we're doing this budget revision, it gives us a better understanding where we wanna be for actually twenty-six also. And to segregate both of them because of the fact that they are two separate entities in the historic building. The other expense that we had, we do have funds set aside, is the building maintenance for the gatehouse, which we did the brand new porch for. There is money set aside for it, it has been approved. We just need to do the budget revision, have everybody look at it. And then once that is, next, our next revision, it won't look as bad as it does right now. Because December is a very, very difficult month for us. We have to pay the layoffs and the state retirement. So the revenues don't come in in December, but we have the expenses that go out. But fortunately, January, we already have, our property taxes came in, almost six hundred thousand. So we're back in the black. So the other thing that we had that was kind of an oddball was a reconciled discrepancy, which was noted to me. All of that is, it's not a whole lot of money, it's a hundred and eight dollars. But we had somebody decide to go and use a card that doesn't belong to them. And so we separated that expense out. It will reverse next month. And then the last big expense that we have is this outlay, the capital outlay for the streets. So like Joe said, you know, when we wanted, when we invested last year, we put like a hold on some of the streets and all the redoing of the streets because of the ARPA fund. What we were expected to do, invest in downtown. So we didn't do as much as we wanted to last year. And this year, we have, we have invested in that and doing all the upgrades to utilize the funds that were given to us that we have set aside. And then that will be all that we are expensing this year because of the new main project that we're gonna be investing in. So that's some of the questions that I've received. The only other thing that you'll notice is that when you go and you look at the income statement at the bottom, we are at a deficit. But the main difference is, is the capital outlays that we did. We invested over three hundred thousand dollars in this physical year of 2025, which the funds were set aside for that we didn't invest last year because of the projects that were ongoing that we wanted to invest in. And then the other major difference is the sixty thousand dollars to the gatehouse. If you add those two together, it puts us in a vaccine position that we were last year for... If you add those two together, it puts us in a vaccine position that we were last year for physical year twenty four. We, that is like three hundred and seventy thousand dollars if you add that to our two hundred thousand dollar deficit. And it's pretty much exactly where we were for physical year twenty twenty four. Um, and then the only other thing that is, uh, notable in the check register is the, um, uh, the contributions for, um, the annual LEOPS and Maryland State, which is a big outlier for us for December. So, sorry I didn't go according to that, but.
All along just fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions for the treasures?
Great job.
That was painless.
All right, um, that brings us to our public safety report, Chief, welcome to the podium.
Sure.
You should, you should find it a bit warmer up there than you will next Saturday at the bay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, I just want to know.
Actually, it's Friday.
It's Friday. Chief, Chief said he had, uh, raised over five hundred dollars, um, for the Special Olympics, uh, with the polar bear plunge that he's participating in here this year.
You're, you're participating?
Done it many times.
Yeah.
Say again?
You're jumping in cold water?
Not his first go, it's not his first plunge.
And, you know, Lieutenant just.
His mental health is, is, is good.
Part of your lawyer initiation?
Well, he actually volunteered to do it, we'll, we'll get to that anyway, but he's working.
But no, seriously, the, the Special Olympics is an organization very near and dear to my family, so on behalf of all of the Special Olympians and their families, uh, thank you for, for doing this, yep.
But what's even crazier than that are the ones, the super plungers?
Yeah.
That do once every twenty, once a, a plunge for twenty four hours, so once an hour for twenty four hours. They did that this past Friday, twenty four hours.
You haven't heard of those?
No.
Yeah.
No.
I've done it once.
That's insane.
I'll never do it again.
It was this past weekend when it was really cold, there's actually ice in the bay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we, I, my wife and I watched it on television and we went, something's wrong.
That's, it's supposed to be a balmy like forty something when I do it. All right, well, we do have a big, uh, public safety report. Before I get to that, I'm just going to go ahead and formally introduce you, come on up, David. David Ulrich, I believe. Our newest officer, uh, he's thirty four years old, married with two children, uh, one actually baby, right, I believe, about a year old.
Six month old baby.
Yeah. His wife is actually a police officer as well. Uh, David spent nine years with the Metro Transit Police Department, which, if you know or not, they actually have jurisdiction in Maryland, Virginia, and DC. So you have to know the laws and actually all three of those organizations to, to properly operate. He was there for, like I said, nine years, and he's also an active member of the Maryland Army National Guard for eleven years, I believe. Where he's a communication specialist, and, uh, he began his career with us on June, or January twenty second. Mayor was kind enough to come over and swear him in.
My honor, yeah, I said, that's my pleasure, that's, that's, yeah, it wasn't a task.
Appreciate it. And he's actually started his field training with Sergeant Kertner, uh, among others. And he'll be field training for a total of eighty hours, which is required for a certified officer in, in, in Maryland. And then he'll be hopefully on his own to patrol in our town, and, uh, I know he's very excited to be here and very eager to get started and have a lot of good questions. It's a little bit different policing than what he's used to. You know, Metro Transit worked in, as you know, the bus, the train stations and things of that nature, so, um, not the type of community policing that we do. You know, going to homes and neighborhoods and things of that nature. So he's making the transition from, from large, uh, agency to it's a small municipal agency, working closely with the community.
Where it's at.
And I know he'll do well, because he has the right attitude. So without further ado, uh, Officer David Ulrich.
All right. Do you, uh, can I get a photograph with, with your supervisor and with Chief and I guess this lieutenant too? Come on, everybody.
Happy to have you.
Come on, everybody. I was too.
You want everybody in the.
Yes, I do, please. We, we don't normally do that, and I'm always upset that we don't.
All guys in the back.
No, 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 you can, yeah. Like you like each other or something. Thank you, guys, I just didn't get a one.
Can we give you a picture of our cars? Can we give you a picture of our cars? Really paying attention to this guy.
All you're doing is having him put a mental picture of you in his head to be on the lookout.
I know. I'm trying to do a bolo right out, right out of the gates.
The chief's already explained where we all live, what kind of cars we have.
That's right.
Normally goes twelve miles an hour over the limit.
I would like to just add that I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank you all and Joe, uh, for supporting our efforts to, uh, be finally fully staffed after ten years of me being here fighting for it. We finally are at that level that, that ten sworn officer level, so thank you all for your support.
Absolutely, which is one hundred percent the reason, I know you're just going to say, I'm not making it up this time. It, the whole reason why I wanted you guys up there was because this was something that we all thought very much of. And it is, and, and the idea that it's, you know, part of our, our funding, a part of our budget, and that, that, uh, it's that important to us, so, um, thank you for that, yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, I'm going to jump right into us, to this, because it is a very large public safety report, because as, as you know, we missed, missed one meeting, I think one or two meetings.
Two.
Maybe two.
Yeah.
This covers December second through January twentieth, so you're looking at, uh, a little over, almost a month and a half. But before I jump into that real quick, there were a few questions, uh, did want to address those real quickly. Uh, one was about, um, the question was regarding twenty four zero zero two thirty six, did this person have a carry permit? And if you noticed in our report, there was an arrest by Officer Jacobs, uh, actually a DUI and, and an arrest for, um, carrying a weapon, wearing, carrying a weapon, uh, while under the influence. The person did have a valid Maryland wear and carry permit, but, uh, the law states you're not supposed to carry, wear and carry while you're under the influence, so that's why he was charged with that. Uh, the second one I'm going to skip because it involves a juvenile, and the third question was regarding the, um, dirt bikes that fled from Sergeant Slareth on Jennifer Way. Uh, the question was, were the suspects arrested or identified? No, they were not. Um, Sergeant Slareth made the very wise decision, and I've said this before, uh, not to pursue these two, we believe juveniles on dirt bikes. Uh, I don't know if you're all aware, but two officers were recently indicted in Intermodal County for pursuing a vehicle that resulted in a fatality. And they were investigated by the Attorney General's Office, Internal Investigation Division, and they were both indicted. So that's why we do not chase people in our town, because not going to have any of our officers get, get indicted for, for doing their jobs.
Chief, these dirt bikes, they were two wheels, not four?
Two, yeah. Yeah, dirt bikes, yeah.
There, there's a four wheeler that rides up Jennifer as well.
Yeah, we, I think we just had some encounters with him.
Chief, in my home state, we had a similar problem where, uh, state police wound up colliding with a two wheeler. And one of their officers wound up being indicted too, I think it was very wise.
Well, we, quite frankly, we stopped pursuing motorcycles a long time ago. But now we're at the point where with the laws and the police reform laws and so forth, that we're not even pursuing vehicles unless it's a felony situation, a life and death situation. Or felony was just committed.
Makes perfect sense.
Just not worth it, no. All right, uh, you can see, I wasn't lying, it's a very big report, seventeen hundred and fifty two total events. Um, if you ever wanted to stop me about any of these reports, now would be the time. There's thirty incident reports, I have reviewed them all, um, but I'm going to highlight just a few of them, if that's okay?
Please.
All right. I did want to touch on, uh, some of the community policing, uh, events that you saw. Um, and I think I may have mentioned this last time, but Sergeant Slareth and Lacey spearheaded our annual Toys for Tots campaign this year. I think you saw the pictures on our Facebook, two very large boxes were collected, uh, they did an outstanding job on that. Uh, and then some of the community policing efforts, again, the two names that keep popping up are PFC Hoppa and PFC Jacobs. Um, Morgan following up with, uh, a troubled youth in our neighbor, in our town, to check on his or her progress again. And, uh, PFC Jacobs providing, I believe it was a winter hat.
Yeah.
To someone who was in need, and Morgan checking on, uh, an elderly subject walking in, in the cold. This is just the kind of efforts that just, you know, is, you just don't see this nowadays. It's, it's the compassion, it's, it's very rare in, in law enforcement, and we're fortunate to have officers that believe in helping people. Not just arresting or, or citing, that we're very fortunate. Uh, we, you already mentioned the, the polar plunge this Friday, it's going to be myself, and unless they back out. Andrew Jacobs, uh, and Jamie from the auxiliary, as well as Annalise is going to attend. Uh, she's not going to be a participant, uh, but she's going to be there to help coordinate things and take pictures. So there'll be four of us, unless they back out, or unless I back out. Very positive. Some of the criminal cases I wanted to touch on, um, well, we are, actually, we already touched on that one, the handgun, loaded handgun, the glove box, so I'll skip over that one. Uh, the burglary is obviously a very important issue, um, Officer Bond responded to a report of a burglary in Brandonburg Circle back on December fourteenth. These don't happen too often in our community, thank goodness, uh, it is a serious crime. Uh, investigation revealed an unknown culprits entered a victim's home during late afternoon hours by prying open a rear window while the victims were both at work. Uh, personal property was stolen from the residence, um, crime, our MSP crime lab was called to process the evidence, process the scene for evidence. And a very exhaustive neighborhood canvass was, was conducted by Officer Bond, Corporal Barrett, and Sergeant Lacey. Uh, Sergeant Lacey ended up assuming, you know, follow up on this investigation, did just an outstanding job. It would take me probably two hours to read his report to you, it was so, so thorough, not one stone was left unturned. Home video was actually, uh, located, which indicated there were four total suspects, unknown race or, or age, who arrived in a black four door Infiniti SUV with no front tag. One of the suspects exited the vehicle, approached the victim, victim's residence, wearing a bright green reflective vest, similar that you see on construction sites or traffic control. Um, Sergeant Lacey, again, conducted a thorough and exhaustive follow up, pursuing all possible leads to include authoring, I think we talked about this, Mayor, three separate geofenced search warrants, which was the first time our police department has ever done that. Don't ask me what it is, but it has to do with, with, uh, it's a judicially authorized search warrant that allows you to search for any type of, uh, mobile devices that may have been used even back in time within a geographic area. You heard of this?
Yeah, I'm familiar with it. It's a cell, it's a cell power based search pattern, and it's, it's very effective, but it, some people don't like it. But it is useful because you can see a, a retrospective of moving through in real time, and you say, well, that's funny, they got pinged here and they got pinged there. And then they did it on the way out, so I understand why it's useful to you.
Unfortunately, it didn't reveal any, any evidence of, of, of cell phones in the area at the time, so it was a shot in the dark. Just goes to show you the length that Sergeant Lacey's willing to go to, to try to catch people that commit crimes in our town. So unfortunately, um, no suspects in that case that were identified, and, um, that's where we're kind of at with that. Um, theft of packages, we've had two of them, one was December thirty first on Brandonburg, and one was, uh, January fourth on Harlan. Um, in both cases, minor thing, minor packages were stolen, I think one contained cat food. And that may not be minors of the owner, right? It's still a crime, it's still a theft. Right, a cat. But, uh, the other one contained trash bags, deodorant, and fudge.
That's good.
Not a combination, but, you know, Amazon, what the heck, right?
New year, lots of.
Uh, in any event, um, there was video on one of them, the one on Brandonburg, um, but again, we weren't able to identify, uh, suspects from that.
I think you still, we, we have somebody in mind, but, but.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Pretty good then, we're still there.
Right. And lastly, another catalytic converter theft, and I just read in the, um, the briefing from, uh, the sheriff's office that neighboring jurisdictions are reporting an uptick in catalytic converter thefts, predominantly at auto dealerships or large car lots. Tonight, to date, we have not, we being Carroll County, have not seen an uptick in reported catalytic converter thefts in our county. Um, but we've had, had one, we've had several in the past. Um, in this case, uh, it happened off of Jerovi Road. Uh, again, Sergeant Lacey, I keep mentioning him, but he's, he, he does the follow up on all these investigations. Exhaustive investigation recovered video indicated there were three suspects operating a twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two black four door Kia Sorento with no tags. Not only did it not have a front tag, it had no tags, so somebody was trying to obviously, uh, remain, keep, keep their vehicles out, out of the security camera videos because they had no tags.
Chief, what vehicle was the catalytic converter?
It was a Honda, Honda C R V, yeah, which is one of the common cars that are targeted. All right, and then I'll move on to administrative matters, and, uh, I believe I had a question about an update on Officer Jacobs and K-9 Ritter. And I just wanted to report that, uh, they're in training multiple days a week with the Baltimore City, uh, Police Department, uh, doing very well. And in addition to Officer Jacobs still continuing to work the road. K-9 Ritter is imprinted on heroin, cocaine, methamphetamine, and ecstasy. Uh, K-9 Ritter's progressing well through the program, should be certified in drug detection and on the streets in the next six to eight weeks, depending on availability for certification days. K-9 Ritter reaches, searches multiple buildings and vehicles with varying odors daily, and it's proven to be extremely effective in his searches and alerts. So this process is taking a little longer, but it's a little, we're taking a little bit of an unconventional approach. We haven't taken the officer and the dog and put them directly into a, a, a training certification program that's, that runs every day of the week. As you know, our officer is a part time officer, so we have to work around his schedule. And so, uh, it's kind of a piecemeal, uh, uh, training regimen, uh, which is, just means it's going to take a little, little longer to get him certified. But in the end, he'll still be, the dog will still be certified, and, and I think will be a valuable tool to staff. Community policing and, and for law enforcement purposes, so we're looking forward to.
If I may, one rider, it was something I had just thought about. Although he's still being trained, Officer Jacobs is also using him for community policing efforts. Um, we've had the scout, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, troops over at our station, and he's stopped in many times, on his own time, knowing he would be there to bring Ritter in.
Thank you.
Great tool, yeah.
Unsurprising, but great to hear.
And I'm very happy to report that K-9 Ritter is a healthy weight, was noted to be in excellent physical condition at his last veterinary appointment, so. Doing well, doing well, any questions for me?
I have a question, my usual question, it's the one I always ask. Do you see, do you see any trends forming? Do you see any ups or downs that concern you, or is everything within band?
No, the only other trend that the county mentions wa- was the liquor stores continue to be a high target for burglaries in neighboring jurisdictions. Um, we haven't had any of those here, knock on wood. Um, again, Sergeant Lacey's been very, very proactive, anytime he sees, uh, that sort of a trend in the area, he'll go to the, our, our establishments and make them aware and, and make sure the cameras are working, provide other advice about, uh, you know, making them more of a hard target, so, um. But between the catalytic converters, which seem to be happening all the time, um, liquor store burglaries, and then the package thefts seem to be kind of the common thing.
That may be seasonal though, if you think.
I think so.
If it's still happening in March, we got a problem.
Well, the deodorant and the fudge was seasonal.
The dog food's constant.
Yes, that's true.
Is the, uh, is the dog, uh, well, uh, established at the residence that it's staying at? Now, the, the owner, is he good to go with the dog?
The K-9?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything's okay there?
Oh, absolutely.
No, it's good, good, good to know.
So it didn't make the report, I didn't see, but, um, I wanted to say thank you, uh, to your officers. Uh, my wife and daughter were out one night, um, and they got home late in the town, and it had snowed unexpectedly. And this is a shout out to Public Works as well, um, and so there was, uh, a car that had, um, abandoned on Oklahoma, and there was no way around it. And so my wife, who, you know, is very skilled driver, um, but, but maybe not as much in the snow as one, one would hope, uh, got stuck. And it was two AM in the morning, they were down in DC at a poet, like, I don't know, thing they do, like a poet jam or poet rap. Um, and then they hung out a little too long with a friend of my daughter's. And so they're getting back into town pretty late, and, uh, your officer showed up, immediately assisted. Public Works came out, was able to back salt, uh, down the roads, were able to get, uh, to save. Public Works came out, was able to back salt uh down the roads, were able to get uh to safety and they were able to get home that night. So, I just wanna say a big thank you uh to your folks.
Appreciate that, yeah.
So, that proves two things, not all the good there is to share, right?
That's right.
And two, they're always there when you need them.
That's right, and it was at two AM in the morning, which is, you know, that's a tough time to get anybody. Uh, and you know, I've been in situations where it's taken a few hours to have someone show up for an event such as that, and they could be sitting there, and they could've walked home, it wasn't far. But, you know, they didn't have to, not that night, because you all were there, uh, you know, doing your job, but that seems above and beyond, so thank you.
Appreciate that, that's a long.
I have two comments I'd like to make uh for the good of the order. Um, one, I'm so grateful for uh the actions that y'all took with respect to my neighbor um and his mental health and um still not home. And secondly, um, you mentioned how long the report is. Um, and so it's not just the, the quantity that's, you know, impressive, it's the quality uh of the community policing. Um, not, when I say community policing, I think there's a, um, sometimes a, it's, it's a misnomer. I think ninety-nine point nine percent of what you'll find in our reports are community policing um because of the way these things are being handled, and it's not always reflected in the reports. So, um, it's, for me, it's, I'm always most excited about the quality uh that I read about, so thank you. Um, and uh I guess that was it. There was a third thing I was gonna say, but I'll, I'll hold that for my updates. Anybody else?
So, I just noticed an uptick in the welfare checks. And just curious if you think it was seasonal or concerns that you have. I, it looks like there wasn't a repeat address, it looks like they were all new or separate addresses. So, it just seemed like there was a lot going on in the past two months.
Maybe seasonal, you know, run the holidays is when, you know, issues hit the hardest and we're, we're called often to come out and intercede. What do you think, Sean? Uh, I mean.
I don't get that most of them were for mental health issues other than just elderly population and hadn't been heard from, um, if I recall correctly.
That's good to know.
I mean, we get those all the time, I, I mean.
No, I know, it just seemed like in terms of the adult protective service calls and just welfare checks, um, it just seemed like even though it was a larger report, the numbers just seemed higher. So, I was just curious what the, what you were seeing on the, on the ground.
We had two instances where there's, there's issues in the, in the household because of uh poor behavior. So, we got adult protective services involved with both of them very quickly and they're all well on their way to take that square away.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, quite a few behavioral health uh booklets given out during this time, so. The officers are doing what they're supposed to do, providing resources, trying to get, get them help, not just, you know, turning around and walking away and saying, it's your problem, you know, try to follow up, you know. The, the follow-ups are what really impresses me the most, is not just the one-time contact, going back later and checking with them to make sure they're on the right track.
And seeing when somebody's living a fragile lifestyle, and that being enough to, for one of the officers to approach that individual when they see them outside and make sure they have what they need, that's, um, that's always huge.
Quality work by, by quality officers, so thank you.
Ten, ten of them now.
Yeah.
All right, all right.
Well, one remains to be seen about the quality work, but yeah.
We'll see.
I got a high hopes for him.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Um, that brings us to our council and commission liaison updates, reports, if anyone has one, we'll start with.
Julie took care of mine, so I'm good.
Perfect. Anything for you?
Noah's district uh commission meeting in January, I'm not sure about February, so.
Okay, thank you.
Parked around Matt, but it's still very early in the season.
Copy. I have nothing.
Uh, no planning commission meeting in January, and we're checking on February.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Um, I had a um cable commission meeting, there's, I don't think this applies to anybody in town, but they've got some new um grants trying to get those people who are on the outside, on the fringes to get service. Um, I think we're doing well as a county, I think we're doing very well in this town. And lastly, I will be attending the management, managing the Strategic Cybersecurity Challenge this Friday.
Thank you for doing that.
So, I think, um, love, love to, it's, is a policy, not technical, so I won't have to, you know, brush off those skills. Uh, it's been seven years since I've had such a class, and I'm sure, you know, in this kind of field, that's like taking a guy off a sailing ship and showing him a reactor and going, here's how you run it now.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Oh, yeah, seven years is a long time. I think Joe in the end's gonna regret it, because you know I'm gonna come back with a lot of, we ought to do this and this and this, and he's gonna go, ah.
We're all gonna appreciate it.
I already regret it.
We're gonna go to God Gov if it kills both of us.
And that's at the, where's that being held?
It's at the Legit Office over by some fort that I've heard of.
So, Legit, so.
Parkway Drive, Hanover. Yeah, in Hanover. Um, I've never been to that building, but I've been, I know that area, I know, yeah, where to stop from.
Hopefully, it's super secure.
Uh, it should be safe there.
All right, great, thank you very much. Um, so, yeah, so I uh have to announce we're having a closed session following uh this brief uh recess we're about to call. But uh the meeting, the closed session meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions article for the Annotated Code of Maryland, section three dash three oh five B, number eight, to consult with staff, consultants or other individuals. Nope, this is not the right one. I updated that and then I failed to save it. What is the, the section for the personnel, I'm sorry?
Number one.
Thank you, three dash three oh five B, number one, thank you. Um, and I know it's that long, like, can you read it?
You want me to read it?
Please, sir.
To discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of an appointee, employees or officials who have jurisdiction or other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals.
Thank you, Joe. And in this case, it's uh personnel and personal information. Fantastic. Um, I would like to call for a five-minute recess till now the gallery to clear. Oh.
Mayor, I do have one other thing, I, and I apologize, I neglected to ask it when Joe was giving his update. Can we get an update next meeting on the possibility of getting code enforcement moving forward? Um, I know we talked about it last year and it's, with new year, I'd like to really start looking into that.
Yeah, yeah, and we have a couple of items on our, on our, on our minds for the second meeting in February along those lines.
Okay, okay, perfect, thanks.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna do this and say, thank you everyone for coming. Uh, five-minute recess, we'll return to uh open session here in a second to go into closed.
All right, Jen.